J3, right?
I am so hungry I'm going to die. What do you got?
Two Aries.
Oh, I'll take one.
No, take both of them. I just had a bunch.
No, I don't want to take them all. I want to eat this and conduct the meeting. It's going to be fun.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order. Okay. We're calling the meeting back to order. Item J3.
Good evening, Commissioners. This item is a reappointment of members and alternates to the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee and permission to advertise for vacant seats. The item includes several different actions. The first is to consider the recommendation of the Space Coast League of Cities to reappoint five of their original seven nominees who are interested in serving a second term on the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee. The second item is to consider reappointment of five of the seven members who were appointed by the County Commission to the slots that you all fill. The third is to consider promotion of Danielle Bowden from an alternate seat that was originally nominated by the League of Cities to the member seat that is determined by the Board and is vacant. And the fourth is permission to advertise to fill vacant seats.
I have three speaker cards on this. Commissioner Tobias, are you okay if we hear from the speakers first, too? Okay, I need Dr. Peter Burrell. Correct me if I said that incorrectly. And Jim Glass after Dr. Burrell. Name an address, please.
Peter Burrell, 1570 Engler's Drive, Palm Bay, Florida. Good evening, Commissioners. Dr. Peter Burrell. I'm here speaking as a citizen about the Save Our Lagoon Oversight Committee. Couple of issues. Just want to bring up the concern about conflicts of interest. And I'd like to see a review of the existing members and future members in review of conflicts before they're allowed to be on this Board in the future. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Jim Glass? And after Jim, we'll have Marilyn Waters.
I'm Jim Glass. I live in Melbourne, Florida. I'm representing the Florida Fly Fishing Association. We have several members that are very active in the lagoon. And a few of us have attended the meetings of the Citizens Committee. I have spoken at the committee twice. I usually listen to their videos, so I'm very familiar with what goes on with the Citizens Committee. I would encourage you to look at the membership of that committee because I think you need some people on that committee that have a hands-on understanding of the design, construction, planning of wastewater and stormwater infrastructure systems. That's what's lacking on this committee. And I also would support what Dr. Burrell just spoke on, that also you need to look at the makeup of the committee. I think there's some city commissioners on there and other people that I think have bias and have personal interests in what goes on. And I think I would certainly encourage you to look at the membership of that committee and put some people on it that really know something about infrastructure and sewage systems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Marilyn Waters. I live in Melbourne, Florida. I've lived here for over 35 years in Brevard County. In 2016, I was involved in the education of the community about the need for restoration of the Indian River Lagoon. And when we talked to people, the very first thing they said to us is, "How do we know you're not going to steal the money and use it for something else?" And so we met with a lot of the Commissioners and said, "You need to put a Citizen Oversight Committee in place for this, or it's never going to pass." And you did, and the community passed it, and hats off to everybody about that. I think it's working. The people who are there are very -- take their job very seriously. And they have spent the past two years spending a huge amount of their personal time trying to learn about the issues, understand the issues, and do what they can to educate themselves. And they also bring with them different areas of expertise. So I think we have a lot of dedicated people who are smart. Did you have a question?
I'm just trying to give -- yeah, we're just trying to give you more time because I think we --
And they ask very good questions, and they really analyze the projects that are there. And I think they all want to be very good stewards of the trust fund for the Indian River Lagoon. I think it's a sound process. It makes sense to continue it and to not just wipe the slate clean and start anew because you have a lot of people who at least now understand the process of the projects, evaluating them before they're sent to the Commission for final approval. Our -- I'm a member of the Indian River Lagoon Coalition, and we have been to every single one of the COC meetings, so we have seen it in action and feel like it's working very well. Not to say that it's not a good idea to have new members come in and be part of it, but I think staggering those members is really a smart thing to do so that you continue with some of that expertise that you already have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the cards we have. Bring it back to Commissioner Loeb.
Sure. Actually, I'll allow Mr. Tobias to go before me. Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If it's all right with you.
I was just going off the lights.
I discovered something with this that makes me a little bit uncomfortable. This ordinance, which sets out the process for filling the SOIRL Citizens Oversight Committee, can be interpreted to require commissioners to vote to approve individuals we do not actually approve of when they are selected by the Space Coast League of Cities. The ordinance states, quote, "The County Commission will appoint the League of City nominee to the Oversight Committee. If a replacement member or alternatives are not required, the entity which selected that member can upgrade to the alternative to the member's seat, choose a replacement in the existing pool of applicants, or request a new call for a qualified citizen voter." While this is ambiguous, and I do not want to generate any legal disputes at this time, I'm very uncomfortable that we are forced into voting for nominees that are not of our choosing. Regardless of the makeup of the committee, this Board has changed. Regardless of who we vote for today, I would suggest, should the committee be listening to not only myself, but a couple of the speakers that came before me, that there may be a stronger push for a little bit more infrastructure. It appears as though not only is there citizen support for it, there is quite a bit of science that would support getting into infrastructure funding. So I would like to make a motion to direct the County Attorney's Office to research and bring options to the Board which would clear any ambiguity contained in Section 17B of Ordinance 2016-15 as it relates to the Board's approval authority of candidates selected by the Space Coast League of Cities. I'd like to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Did you want to speak on the issue, Commissioner?
I think he's covered it actually pretty well.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I've slept a few times since I looked at all this stuff two years ago, but I seem to remember that we do have oversight, do we not, over the League of Cities selections? Don't we have an ability to?
I'm going to defer probably to the County Attorney, but the language says the County Commission will appoint the League of Cities nominees. And so I think it's that verb "will" is the question. You know, if it was "shall," that would be clear. If there's a way to avoid that process entirely and just have their nominations stand, I think those are the possibilities.
Right. You could amend it to be clear. I mean, the way it is written right now, it says "you will appoint them," and there are other areas in the ordinance where it talks about the League of Cities has its appointment process. And it does seem that it's basically ministerial. And if you want to change that, we can bring some options back for that, or we can simply make it clear that the League of Cities appointments go directly forward so that you're not blessing something that you're not really in favor of.
I can remember I raised an objection over one individual that the League appointed. Commissioner Tobias, you're big on doing that kind of research. You might want to look at those meetings. And -- because I know that I did object to somebody that was from the League of Cities.
And what -- sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And what was the -- help me, I'm sorry. What was the result? Were they appointed anyway?
I think not. I'm not positive, but I think not.
Well, you pulled a fast one, and I don't think I have the same power that you probably do. And all this would do was -- would clear up and --
I don't have a -- I don't -- I think it's wise to have some oversight of the Oversight Committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And the other one, if you disagree with that, then this would be ministerial in nature and should never come to the Board. So that is, in fairness, that is the other option. Either it passes directly through and Mr. Batte's office handles it, or I would prefer the latter, that we look over those individuals. But those, I think, probably are a couple of the options that, you know, Ms. Bentley will get back to us here in short order. There may be other ones I'm not aware of, but I just didn't like the word "will" in there. I was a little uncomfortable with that.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I think I get it. Okay.
And I just have a question, maybe it's for Commissioner Tobias and Ms. Bentley. Are we required to use the League of Cities nominations, or can we modify that completely?
It says you will appoint the League of Cities nominees.
In our original ordinance or in the -- okay.
In the ordinance, yep.
No, but I'm saying, can we modify that to where we don't even have to use the League? That's what I'm getting at.
Oh, yeah, I think you probably could. We can look at that. We can see if you can eliminate the League.
If that's okay with the Board, I'd like that option to come as well. Because I know, I mean, I've had people in my office, and I've had scientists, and I've had people who probably, although maybe citizens, they're not part of the political machine that is the League of Cities. And say positives and negatives, you know, there's something to be gained by going outside of the League.
Okay. All right. I'll see what we can do.
Quick question on that. When we formed this, what was the advantage to having the Space Coast League of Cities bring in half of the members of this Oversight Board?
As a half-cent sales tax. In other sales tax collections, the portion that's collected from the incorporated areas is usually distributed to the incorporated areas. For this effort, the idea was to develop one plan and put all the funds into one trust fund to implement that one Save Our Indian River Lagoon plan. And so the proposal was that the cities -- the way the cities would have input over how those dollars were spent was by having the League of Cities nominate half of the members to that Oversight Committee so that there would be city influence on how the plan is updated annually over the 10-year life of the tax.
So this is the way, instead of us negotiating with each municipality, we just let them choose a central board that would go ahead and negotiate with us on that instead of having city members? Got it.
Perhaps we could have these municipalities even forward, you know, their councils for -- I mean, if you want to keep that element of the municipalities in it. I just, I'm a little -- the League of Cities does great things, but they do things that I fundamentally disagree with. So if I'm going off of just who their appointments are, then I'm trusting that they've vetted and I don't -- you know, I'd rather be able to call up my council member within my district and say, you know, "Why are you sending -- forwarding this one?" Or to say, you know, or to send people who live in municipalities, "Go appeal to your council, they're appointing members," because the League of Cities is sort of a clique by itself. That's just my opinion. So I'd like to see that option as well, if possible. Make you more work. I apologize.
Do you want this by the 18th or is January okay?
I think January's okay. Is January okay? Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I think you need to look at the origins of this whole process. Because it was determined that, as someone has already mentioned, I was at an awful lot of those meetings when we were out educating the public. And that's true. The number one question, the very first question almost always was, "If we're going to vote for this, how do we know the monies are really going to be spent for the lagoon? How do we know they're not going to be spent on this project, or that project, or sewers, or, you know?" Those questions were raised because they said they'll vote for it if the money goes to the lagoon. That was overwhelmingly conveyed to all of us. And the other thing was that they wanted to see, the people of the county wanted to see that there was oversight so that the money couldn't be used someplace else or diverted to some other pet project of a Commissioner. So wiser heads than mine decided that, well, why don't we have people appointed from the League of Cities? And why don't we have people appointed by the Commissioners? And that would even out. But I think that it's not a bad idea for the Commissioners ultimately to have some oversight. I don't think that we should try and usurp the decision-making of the League of Cities. There's an awful lot of people in this community that care about that lagoon. And an awful lot of people that I don't know and you don't know that the League of Cities people may know. So I think we can reach the entire community by having League of Cities pick their people and we pick our people. But I think overall, we should have some oversight, too.
And perhaps that's when they bring back our options, we can have that argument then. But, I mean, because there's probably, at least in my opinion, pros and cons of both. I don't know that a city manager sitting on the Citizens Oversight Committee is a representative of the citizenry, or someone that's directly benefiting from funding for a project that's voting on whether or not we do that project.
Well, and that very well could be true.
It is true.
But the other side of the coin is that I know in one instance, there's a city mayor that is a captain on the Indian River Lagoon, and he takes -- he's a fishing guide. So he would be an ideal person to be on the committee because he knows better than you, me, or anybody in here what that river looks like from day to day to day. So, you know, it can go both ways.
Get your work cut out for you, Ms. Bentley. Moving right along. Yes.
That was a motion for Ms. Bentley to report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we also have to vote on the reappointment of those folks. And I don't think that we really have the -- we don't have the time to do it before the appointments. And, you know, I probably should never ask an attorney their opinion, not knowing the answer. But we're pretty much obligated as a Board, just for the record, to, according to ordinance, to vote for this. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay, just, do you guys recall the motion that's on the floor? Oh, I thought you made the motion, and he seconded. Okay. Are you making it?
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to reappoint the members and alternates to the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee.
And to promote Danielle Bowden? That's number four. She hasn't there, too.
Yes.
And to go ahead and advertise with a little way through.
Right, and advertise for volunteers to fill the vacant seats.
I make the second?
More discussion?
I do have a little bit of a --
I'm sorry.
I apologize. I know it's a long meeting. I -- thank you. I appreciate that. I do have concerns with one of the individuals that's identified. My specific concern is that his continued inclusion could politicize the committee beyond where it needs to be. Recently, this individual, in my consideration, used pejorative or at least derogatory terms to refer to multiple members of this body, and in full disclosure, including myself. It's the first individual, John Byron, who is listed at the top of the second page of the agenda item. I've gone through, with the help of my staff, all of the individuals who submitted applications. There is a professional engineer named John Luznar, who is a senior project manager at BRPH. He has a background as a structural engineer, design manager, project manager, and senior project manager with areas of specialty in science, lagoon advocacy, and technology. I would ask that the Commission consider approving that portion with the substitution of John Luznar in lieu of John Byron.
The only problem I have with that is I don't have any idea who John Luznar is.
Yeah, me too.
John Byron, he may be pejorative, as you're saying, but I also know he's very, very well-versed in the Indian River Lagoon. So I don't know what I'm giving up to gain. You know what I'm saying? So that's kind of difficult for me to make that decision on the fly.
You want to fill us in on John Byron's background, science background?
Can that one alone just wait, or do we have to do that tonight?
No, you could ask us to include that in the advertisement, and then when we bring back new applicants, you could consider -- you could ask Mr. Byron and Mr. Luznar to reapply if they're interested, and you could consider those with all your other applications.
Yeah, I like that idea.
That sounds good.
That sounds more fair. All right, so that's a -- amend that motion. Amend that motion?
Yes, I make the amendment to -- I would like to amend the motion to include asking Mr. Luznar and Mr. Byron to reapply if they so desire.
For discussion, Madam Chair?
Sure. Commissioner Tobias?
So I was fully going to vote for this prior to Commissioner Loeb's suggestion. And listen, I'm sure that Mr. Byron has said things about me, but I don't read any of those blog posts, so I really don't take that all that seriously. But now that we've made the decision that we're going to decide who of this group we're going to reappoint, if we've broken the seal, I don't -- sorry, I see Frank nodding his finger, which is -- I need to -- I'm going to -- can I hit pause and run over to Frank?
It's because I believe in the case that you're talking about for Mr. Byron, he was actually appointed by the county, so it was your discretion anyway.
Okay, okay. So we have -- so in other words, we have not broken that seal.
That's true.
Okay, that -- thank you for that very, very important distinction. So I take back everything I say, and again, Frank, you're right, and I will be voting in favor of this.
Okay. And let's call that question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank goodness. Okay, item J4, Ian. Hiding in the shadows back there. With his glowing tie.
It looks very safe in the evening.
I don't know if you can see it, but it's menorah. So, good evening and happy Hanukkah. Item J4 is a request for the Board to extend the sunset date for the Together in Partnership Citizen Advisory Board and to amend or add Echerd alternatives as a standing committee member. Together in Partnership is a longstanding group that provides an opportunity with Board Oversight and structure for community agencies to come together in partnership to meet ongoing community needs. So they address issues and try and reduce issues of, say, juvenile crime, suicide. They have strong subcommittee right now going up on opioid issues, so substance abuse, mental health. And while they are not statutory -- statutorily required, they do provide some ability for the community to meet some statutes, particularly around the areas of the foster care system, DCF planning, and DJJ planning. And here for questions.
Okay, I have three cards. We're here from the public. Phoebe Powell? And then Stanley Briz. I appreciate your patience. I know we've had -- our meetings usually aren't quite like this, but thank you for being patient. Name an address, please.
Good evening. I'm Phoebe Powell. I'm a resident of Rockledge, 4835 Pino Street. I'm here today representing Children's Home Society as our regional executive directive director. We have locations in Cocoa, Melbourne, and in Palm Bay, and we serve the community about 5,000 children a year throughout the county. So we serve the entire county. And I'm here tonight because I have participated personally in Together in Partnership since 2006, and participated in the subcommittees of TIP since 2004 because I really see the value of this and what it does for our issues here in the community. The framework that is provided by Together in Partnership allows for the child-serving agencies to come together and address the needs of the whole child and not just one aspect of a child's life, like you may see, like just in substance abuse, or just in school education, or just in child welfare. And over the years, I have observed the subcommittees of TIP to transform, to address the changing critical needs in our community from a priority focus of juvenile justice to prioritization -- excuse me, privatization of foster care system, which concluded with our lead agency for foster care being just one county instead of multiple counties. We have shifted focus then to focus on infant mental health and child abuse prevention, and as Ian presented, our current focus, areas around the opioid abuse crisis, family homelessness, and children's mental health in our community. As the executive director for a local nonprofit and a parent of five children in this community, I greatly appreciate the framework provided by the county for Together in Partnership. As a nonprofit, we have been able to seek federal, state, and foundation grants to help fill the gaps because the county's oversight provides credibility to the things that we do. This -- without this framework, we would have duplication of services because we would have to go through -- I can't even think of the number of meetings, probably like 10 or 15 different meetings just to get the same information. And not everybody would go to all of those meetings, so we would have duplication. And we would be without the benefit of integration of services between not only our child welfare, our juvenile justice, and our school board system, but also bringing those groups to talk with our substance abuse providers, our homelessness providers, domestic violence, mental health, child welfare, our health providers, and our early childhood providers. And I recognize that I am standing here as one agency, and we've had many more tonight. And I think Mr. Golden has your next speaker's comments because he had to leave. But we had representatives here tonight that represented substance abuse, foster care, child abuse prevention, early childhood, and homelessness. So
Thank you.
We thank you for your time.
Is Stanley the one that had to leave? Oh, yeah, he had to leave way earlier. Did you?
Stanley sent me an email, which I can forward to the Board, but the bottom line is that he chairs the opioid task force. And he talks about the different members, the fact that when you go to other meetings of substance abuse groups throughout the four county area, that all counties are represented. They have the county government involvement. And Together in Partnership allows for us to have that involvement on that very important issue. He talks about the crisis and the executive orders that came from the Governor's office. But like I said, I don't want to read the whole thing. It's kind of long.
That's okay. We get the idea. Heather Howlett?
Good evening, Heather Howlett. I am with Brevard Cares as the Community Services Manager. I work in Rockledge and live in Palm Bay. I have also been a member of various TIP subcommittees for a little over 10 years now. I just want to advocate that TIP continues. What I've seen through working with TIP is that we've gotten to work on amazing community projects and make differences in children's lives by my attendance and several of my staff. By my attendance and several of my staff's attendance at TIP, we learn about new ways to help families, whether that be families who are suffering with opiate addictions, like we talked about, child abuse, as we talked about earlier, victims of human trafficking, victims of domestic violence, victims of homelessness and housing issues. We've worked very hard on suicide prevention, early education and intervention, bringing forever families to kids who need to be adopted. So with TIP, I can attend one meeting and kind of gather information, and help strategize, and help complete community projects, kind of across the spectrum, which child welfare, which I'm involved in, kind of hits everything, so it's important that we kind of, we move forward in a way where we're including all the different resources for our families. In conclusion, I just want to advocate that we don't sunset TIP. I think it would hurt the children that I serve at Brevard Cares almost 600 in any given month, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Lober?
Just briefly, Mr. Golden, am I incorrect in my assessment that the amount that we're talking about, the $2,706, which equates to the 100 hours of staff support, is less than we've spent in the past?
It is. What we did about, actually, I can't remember, I don't want to give a false number, but several years ago, we moved to have the county actually doing the staff support for the main TIP meeting. The subcommittees themselves, the agency's staff organize and do minutes for.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, and I'm going to be supporting this, but I think you said something that, sorry, needs to be restated. Is it your understanding that statute requires, state statute requires us to house some of the current projects in TIP, so if we were to do away with, if we were to forego the sunset, we would have to create another board, or find housing for those statutory requirements? Is that, is that your interpretation?
No, it is not.
Okay.
My interpretation is that there are certain statutory requirements, and I put the two statutes in here, that actually require that the community itself has input. TIP allows an avenue for that input without the community itself trying to figure out how to do that, and it also allows for the county itself to provide some input into those processes and those planning avenues.
So, I'm sorry, so I should have asked a question. What happens if we were to sunset TIP?
Well, I think some of the speakers did speak to that. If you sunset TIP, it will require a lot more meetings for the individual groups. One of the biggest things that TIP provides is that one stop, if you will, for those agencies to come together and talk about services, plan for services, look at funding, partner on funding, that, I think it was Phoebe who had spoken to, the fact that there'd be 10 to 15 different meetings, and you'd have agencies no longer providing that, well, partnership, if you will. But no, there is no requirement that the county staff, Together in Partnership.
Thank you, I totally misread that, so I appreciate that clarification.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I make a motion to approve this. It started in 1999, they've extended it eight times, so I think it's a good board, so I want to make a motion to go ahead and extend the date.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobias voting in the negative. He did until he, yeah. All right, next item, Commissioner Lober, J5.
Okay, so, the crux of this is the salaries that we're receiving as county commissioners are somewhat higher than what the median household income is in the county. During the course of my campaigning, to be sitting where I'm sitting now, I did mention that I was going to bring as my first motion, one, to reduce commissioner's salary, to address the fact that it's over and above what the median household income is. It's phrased as a resolution as opposed to a motion, simply due to an issue with the county charter precluding us from doing this in the form of a motion. This is something where there really wouldn't be any teeth in it were it to pass. If it does pass, I certainly will cooperate with it, I certainly hope that it passes, but I do understand that folks have different abilities, and they have different inclinations with respect to this, but I have to hold true to my word, and I did say I was going to bring this motion, I'm going to be voting for it, I would encourage my colleagues to do the same, but I understand whichever way it goes.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions, this was a little unique, and I appreciate that. What, may I ask a series of questions, Madam Chair?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Thank you. What is the origin, that seems like a unique promise that you made to constituents, that you would lower salaries by $8,231.36. My question, what is the origin of $8,231.36?
It was, as of the most recent data that I could find, that was the difference between what our salaries are presently set at and the median household income, so that's where that was arrived at.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And this is, this is a clear indication that we follow sunshine, because this is the first that we have the ability to ask these questions. So will this money be returned post-tax?
Fairly enough.
In other words, well, I've already paid taxes on this money, and thus returned it to the county?
The way that I wrote it is after adjusting for taxes, but I would defer to Ms. Bentley to confirm that my understanding in terms of how this is written matches how it would apply in reality.
I think what you're going to have to do is give back the money, so you're going to have to receive it in order to give it back, so you would be taxed.
What I would say, though, if I may briefly, as this is something where, as I mentioned in full disclosure, there are no teeth, as it's a resolution at this point, it's really up to the individual commissioner as to whether they do that pre or post-tax.
I don't know how we would do it pre. If I write a check, I've already, I think I've already paid taxes on it any which way, but that's fine.
You're right, it's getting late.
Yeah. If you know a way, see me after this. Is there, is this specifically intended for, is there a use intended for these funds? Do you intend these to be used for, you know, staff or other commission expenses? Have you earmarked this money?
No, it's just going to the general fund. If that's something that would change your voting in the negative to voting in the positive, I'm not necessarily opposed to earmarking it for something that's universally agreeable.
And you mentioned this, but how will compliance be tracked? Is that, will that be a job of Mr. Berman over there? Or, you know, I'm just, I'm just curious how you plan to do that.
I'll track it. I'll take on that affirmative responsibility.
And report at every, at the end of every meeting?
If you want me to report at the end of every meeting, I can do that, that may be a little more often than I anticipated, but I'll be happy to track it.
Okay. Is this a non-binding agreement? My question is, let's say the vote is in the affirmative 3 to 2.
Yes.
The individuals that vote no on this, are they obligated to pay the $8,231.36?
Taking off for a moment my commissioner hat and putting on my attorney hat, and I'm going to defer to Ms. Bentley as well to confirm that my attorney hat is not backwards, I don't believe that it's lawfully binding on anyone whether you vote yes or no. I would hope that we would honor our promise and do it. If your concern is that two may vote no and three may vote yes, and the three would be obligated to, but the two wouldn't, there's no lawful obligation, there's no punishment if you fail to do this, other than that it might look bad. My hope is that it's either all or nothing, where if it passes that we all adhere to it, if there's something where the exact amount is problematic for someone, if they want to make a motion to amend or request that I amend the motion to some different amount, if it's really going to be that, if it's either going to be a deal breaker, or if it's going to be a large concern to that extent, I'm not opposed to that either. I think the spirit of what I was going after was to reflect that we're being compensated over and above what the average household takes in, and I think it's something where, as a gesture of goodwill, it would be nice to send some of that back.
I have to, I have to point this out, and he would be very disappointed with me pointing it out, but your predecessor, Commissioner Barfield, donated his full salary for four years, and had the unfortunate distinction of sitting next to me for a great period of that time, so, and never, never once took recognition for that, and he probably doesn't want me to mention, but there's not a day that goes by that, when I learned that fact, that I wasn't that much more proud to sit next to him. My thought on this would be, I don't think you should ever trust a politician or a used car salesman, and at one time or another, I've been both.
Our attorney's okay?
Yeah, there and there as well. So what I would ask is, is if we could make this legally binding, not only for us, but for future commissions. So what I believe that would take is, we could amend the charter through ballot language, and my guess is that that would overwhelmingly pass. Let me tell you why I think that would, should, would overwhelmingly pass, because in the year 2000, it was put before the voters. We make $56,000 or $57,000. Statute controls our salaries, what we can cap it at, and state statute, had that ballot language not been put on, our salaries would be, I'm sure you're aware, $90,418. So the voters decided by a vote of 80 to 20 that we were getting paid too much, or it should not be increased. So I think that this is such a good idea, that we should memorialize this in our charter and not make it voluntary. So I hope that it's not just the five of us, that future commissions would go ahead and further that, but I think it would be wise to, instead of doing it voluntarily, either do it through ordinance, I guess, which would have to be taken up in an odd year, or just do it cleanly and attempt to amend, amend the charter, which also could be done at the next election. So that would be, you know, I'm not against the spirit of it, but I would like it a little, I'd like teeth in it, and we can do that, and I certainly would support you if you're willing to put that on the ballot. I certainly have a couple suggestions of things that will be coming up here in the next few months about putting on the ballot. I would strongly second that one, if that was something that you were willing to hold off on, so we could make sure that future commissioners follow by your example.
Okay, Commissioner Pritchett?
What an interesting conversation.
Sorry.
It's okay, I really appreciate your heart, Mr. Lober, you talked to me about this when you were running, and, so, here's some things, and I know this never comes out popular in newspaper, Mr. Berman, be very kind to me when you write all this up, but if we hadn't have done that self-imposed charter cap, actually, our salaries after would be $91,181, so we're already at like a $32,000 less than other commissioners. Volusia County's making 90, Orange County's making 100, not that I, I don't think we should get pay raises or have them go up, but I don't know that our, the money we're making right now is an affair compensation. This is a very expensive job to do it, you know, I couldn't afford to do it full-time, I mean, I'm a CPA, and the opportunity cost of what you have to give up, and y'all are going to find, you'll find this out too, is you're going to lose a lot of money by having to do this job, so there's a lot of donated hours you're putting into it also. And another thought is, is if you don't compensate the people up here that are doing the job, not, you know, just picking on us or whatever, you know, you need, you need people who are educated in these fields to do it, that they, they're able to give up other income to come in here and sit and do these positions. This is a high-level position up here, and it takes a lot of study, and so those are just some areas that, you know, I'm just going to be real slow in moving forward with this as we make those decisions, so that's my thought on it.
Commissioner Lober?
Just to respond to a couple of the items that were mentioned, I don't, I don't think there's any way to disagree with respect to what the other county commissioners are making in separate counties. Whether that's correct, whether that's not correct, that's perhaps a better question than whether it's different than what we're making, I think that's a given. In terms of the opportunity cost, I agree, there's absolutely an opportunity cost associated with being up here, where many of the folks sitting up here could make more money were we not sitting up here, but I'll tell you, one of the things that comes to mind that isn't necessarily perfectly analogous, but I think it bears worth mention, is, you mentioned you were a CPA, I'm an attorney, I served as the past president of the Brevard County Bar Association, that took a tremendous amount of time out of my life, it cost me a tremendous amount of money the year that I served in that capacity, and I did it nonetheless. I think being up here, and I don't mean to denigrate anyone or chastise anyone, but I believe being up here is something done for civic betterment with respect to folks not being able to live on this salary. I understand that there are many individuals that might not apply for the job but for the salary, and I'll tell you, at least in my background, because we have a diverse set of backgrounds up here, one of the things that I'm concerned about when I see someone running for judge or seeking to be appointed as a judge, is whether or not they're doing it solely for a salary increase, and granted, that's a totally different number than we're making up here, but I don't know that we want folks, and I don't believe, just to be completely, completely out there in the open, I don't believe anyone sitting up here is doing this solely for the money, I don't believe that's the case, but I am concerned that in the future, someone who's making less may say, gee, that's an opportunity for me to make a little bit more money, and may throw their hat in the ring, not necessarily having the right reasons for running. I don't believe, as I said, anyone up here has that, but it's a concern of mine.
No input, Commissioner Smith? The reason why I'm asking is because this affects all of us, it's not a district thing, it's not a, I mean, I can comment before you if you feel bad about it.
Yeah, I can't add anything to what has already been said, I think you guys have hit all the, all the numbers. The only thing I would add is, you have to consider the fact that this, the salary that we get hasn't changed since 1999. What has the Consumer Price Index, which you guys keep quoting all the time, what's that done in the last 19 years? And, and I'll throw one other thing out, if you're looking for somebody with talent, you're going to get that person that's most talented by paying them the least amount of money, or you're going to pay them more money? If you want a, if you want a winning baseball team, do you go out and buy the best pitcher that you can get, and you're not going to get that person for a bargain basement price? So I think those are considerations, and I don't know, I'm not sure that it would pass in the county. This county's changed a lot since 20199, and I think it would be an interesting, I think it would be interesting to put it on the ballot and see.
And I would tend to agree, I don't have an issue with putting it on the ballot, but I think, again, it's all in how the language is, because if you, if the item you put on the ballot is, should we be compensated as like similar-sized counties, that may pass. If it's, should we cut pay, of course it's going to pass, because nobody likes a politician. My concern, and again, this, and you know if we make a charter change, it doesn't affect us, it affects the next commission, and which is fine, but that's probably a safeguard as well. You know, I am concerned that you will limit the field of people that do this job, or what is going to happen is if you lower the salary to a point where you may have one of us up here supporting a family, what happens is, is that person's not doing this job full-time, because this is a full-time job, I don't care if you work your schedule to make it work, if you don't, if you're not doing this job full-time, you're not doing this job right. So if you want someone to do this job full-time, you don't want an old retired, rich person who can afford not to make any money doing it, like, and I hate to say that in light of what Commissioner Tobias said with Mr. Barfield, because he does work very hard outside of his office, of course, but he did it quietly, he did it discreetly, he wasn't doing it for recognition, and oftentimes, he would be quite embarrassed and very red on the face when, and I hesitate, and I like your resolution, I think it's great, but it goes against the charter, it's not enforceable, and when, by giving $8,000 of my salary and your salary, and Commissioner Pritchett's salary, et cetera, I'm saying I agree entirely with the way that we spend our general fund, which I do not. I do not. So if I'm allocating that money to the general fund, it's like giving it a blessing. And I'll tell you, we've written some checks that I voted adamantly against and sat up here passionately and voted against. So if I'm going to give them my earned money, even if it's just in this position that I proudly and very humbly serve, then that's blessing and endorsing how government's spending our money. And I don't always agree with the way we spend it. And I'm usually on the losing end of that. So I'm very conflicted, because I donate money, our family does, but I don't talk about it, I don't brag about it, and I don't talk about the hours that we put in at the office, I don't talk about what we do outside of our office. I just know that, you know, Ms. Pritchett brought up a good point. Like Ms. Pritchett is, you know, a degree accountant, she could have the potential to make a lot more money. I'm a nurse practitioner. That's a six-figure salary, just working a regular five, eight-hour day. And I'm not saying that I deserve a pat on the back for doing this job, but I understood that coming in. And that's the sacrifice that I make for doing this job. So I mean, there's got to be some balance, because I don't want a bunch of people, no one's going to say, oh, I'm going to run hard for that $50,000-a-year job. They're going to run for a constitutional office if it's all about the pay, in my opinion. At least if history is true about who runs for political office, and I've been around here a while, usually they don't run for a commission seat, they'll run for a constitutional office. You know, I'm not pointing fingers or anything, but I've seen it, and I'm sure many people here have. So I just think we need to be careful, you know? And if we're going to start adopting resolutions that are enforceable, you know, and give eight grand to the general fund, I mean, I love Frank dearly, but Frank does the will of this commission. And if we're spending money in a way that I don't agree with, why would I give him my money to do that? You know, so again, I'm conflicted. I'm more than happy to put it on the ballot, but I still think we should be careful on what we're asking our people to vote on. Because people will vote to pay us zero, if you say, if you ask. And who can do this job and do it effectively full-time?
That makes sense.
And I don't want somebody that's not going to do it full-time. And I put the time in because they have to be at eight hours somewhere in an office or in a medical building or whatever, because they can't afford to do this job. So I want middle-class people doing this job, you know? All right, I'm done. My rant over. Is that a new light, Ms. Pritchett?
Yeah. Good point. And after tonight, I bet there's some people that would try to make us pay to do this job. So I just wanted to say, Commissioner Loeb, I do appreciate your heart. I understand where it's coming from, and that I just, I totally respect and honor. A point you brought up, though, but that could make this playing field that just very wealthy people would be able to run.
Who could afford to?
You guys are learning this. This is an expensive job, you know?
Or asking people.
Commissioner Tobias made it so you go out for lunch, you have to pick up the bill now, because we're not allowed to take anything from anybody when we go out. And so, you know, it's just, it's been an expensive job.
It is.
So just wanted to throw that out there. But Commissioner Loeb, I just, I love your heart, sir.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Loeb.
Just a couple comments, and I don't want it to get too circular or to drag on, but with respect to what Commissioner Smith said, I understand where you're coming from, and I think it certainly makes sense that if you want the best talent, you pay the most. But I don't know that we can really analogize government service with private industry. It's the same thing in the nonprofit world, where people are getting paid oftentimes nothing, and you're getting tremendous talent. I can tell you, whether they consider me tremendous talent or not, I don't know, but I can tell you, I donate a lot of time and money in the nonprofit world. And were they to pay me something, I wouldn't take it anyway. I don't know that it always has a one-to-one correlation, where the higher the pay, the higher the quality of the candidate, the higher the quality of the individual that you end up roping into that position. You know, I obviously am starting to get a better sense as to the sentiment of the commission with respect to this. And it sounds like, if I push this forward this evening, it sounds like there's certainly three that are not in favor. However, it does sound like there's a potential that I may have three in favor at a minimum as to potentially putting an issue to ballot, and that may be the best point at this juncture. That may be the best course of action at this juncture.
J-6. Mr. Loeb.
Okay.
Causing more trouble. No, I'm just kidding.
Yes, I have two more in a row here. I apologize, folks. I'm just chomping at the bit to get some things done. This item is in reference to TDC imposing a term limit on the Board of Directors and also on the Executive Director. I'm just going to read it verbatim so that there's no ambiguity or misunderstanding. It reads as follows: "This request seeks to direct staff to draft an ordinance retroactively imposing a two-term limit upon the Board of Directors of the Tourism Development Council with the following requirements: Any TDC director who has served two consecutive terms shall be ineligible to serve for a period of two terms following the service triggering the application of the two-term limit. A director must remain off the TDC Board of Directors for a minimum of two terms prior to being eligible for reappointment to the TDC Board of Directors, whereupon he or she will once again be subject to a two-term limit." And lastly, it reads, "Additionally, a tourism office executive director and/or any individual holding a similar position shall be ineligible to serve on the TDC Board of Directors for a period of six years following the last date of employment." The two items I'd point out, picking up where I most recently left off, it says, "or similar position," so that we don't have something cute where the title changes in order to avoid the supplying. Moreover, the retroactive application, and I know I've gotten some questions with respect to that, but having done some research, having consulted with Ms. Bentley, it appears to be the cleanest and the fairest to have that apply once an existing term is over. So it will apply retroactively in the sense that if your term ends in six months, if you'd been on eight years or longer, six months down the road, then you're off for a period of eight years. It's not that if this passes tonight instantaneously, you're off, and that's that. Because I know, and I've spoken with other folks who are concerned, that that would have a tremendous negative impact in essentially not allowing the TDC to plan for the change. And I believe that passing it in this fashion allows for that change to be accounted for so that there's not absolute chaos.
That's it? I expected more.
No.
No?
We can occasionally be brief.
So is that a motion?
I would move to approve it as listed.
Any commissioner input? The reason why I ask is because I don't want to start speaking if you guys want to talk about it.
Yeah. I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
And question when you get the opportunity.
Do you want to talk now?
I just have a question for Ms. Bentley.
Well, you just didn't press your button. You didn't follow the rules.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to follow the rules, I'm new here.
Sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Tobias.
Yes. This retroactivity, when we got into state statute, was a little complicated. So I wanted to get Ms. Bentley's interpretation. The resolution as written, does it meet state statute? And is it, for better of word, is it clean, where we would not run into legal concerns?
Yes, with the retroactive language not meaning immediate ouster, you have to have four-year terms per the statute. The statute does not address term limits, and therefore, that field is open for you to regulate. So it's clean.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Here's my heartburn on this, Laura Lee Thompson. She's absolutely amazing, and she just does such a great job. You know, she's been volunteering this for a while. She doesn't have any ulterior motives for how she serves. She's just great input. So a thought, and I'm trying to figure out the heart of this and why we're doing it, because I hear from everybody's talking about term limits on boards, and I know we're going to get to that discussion soon, but I don't have a big pool of people just knocking down doors to get on boards. Maybe some boards more than others. So if we start doing this with term limits, I'm going to end up with boards that I can't get appointments to after a while, because it's like 1% of all the people in my world will volunteer to do all the work for the other 99%. So it's hard to get people to participate, and qualified people. So what if we did this, and we imposed that on, like, chair appointments, but maybe our own appointments, we were allowed to have a little bit more negotiation with? Because my thought on this is, is we can actually have term limits with them anyways. If we don't like them, or they don't go with what we were elected in to do, we'll just take them off and remove them. But I would like to work this, so that if you're newly elected and you don't like your appointments, you're not bound by the last commissioner's appointment, you have an ability to come in right away and change your boards if you want. So that's something I think we should do, because I don't think it's fair if the last commissioner left you with a bunch of appointments that don't have the same views you have. But on this, if we wanted to do this, so that the ones that we did the overall appointments with by the last chair, you wanted to change that, to have limits, and then we were able to keep our own districts with an ability, because I tell you what, it would be hard to remove Laura Lee Thompson off of this board, because she's just amazing. So that's my plea with it.
Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you. And I agree with much of what Commissioner Pritchett just outlined. What makes this board unique is it's covered in state statute. So the very condition that you just mentioned, that you have a, and I don't want to name any names, but my appointee, who I was not, and when I say my appointee, the appointee made by the prior county commissioner, I and him disagree on a whole bunch of philosophical political issues. And his beliefs and my beliefs do not mesh. And I wish I would have that ability to do it, but state statute precludes me from removing that individual in the middle of the turmoil we just cited here. So I think this is extremely important, and I think it's targeted. I think we need to look at this from a larger perspective, and I think we are. I think a citizen out here, Ms. LaSalle, will be bringing that up. But I think this is a wonderful idea, and I think it serves to deal with some of the issues that you want to deal with, but within the confines of state statute. So thank you very much for bringing this up. I wish we could have dealt with it, you know, prior.
Thank you.
So I wouldn't end up with, you know, someone that, who, while I respect him as an individual, his political beliefs and mine are polar opposites. So I will be here, and I thank you for your points as well. Commissioner Pritchett.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I'm not crazy about this idea, because I think we're getting into weeds. I think to solve Mr. Tobias, Commissioner Tobias's problem would...
Which one?
Well, good point, good point. How many do you want me to count? No, I'm just kidding. Now, with regard to you taking office, you're realistically stuck with an appointee that you can't change for two years.
Four years.
Well, in your case, it's four.
Four years, it was a midnight appointment.
How can they do that if you came in November? You would have had at least a good argument.
We could solve this problem by just having the appointments concurrently run with the commissioner. So when you take office, you would have the opportunity to, because the position would be vacant, you have the opportunity to appoint someone, if we make the terms concurrent with the commissioners. So you wouldn't have that problem. I had that problem, because the appointee that I inherited, I couldn't remove him, because he had been appointed two years before. So he started two years to go. His term was four years, he started two years to go. I was fortunate in that he turned out to be a terrific person and a good appointment. But the bottom line, I didn't have that opportunity. So I think if we made the appointments concurrent with the commissioners, so that when you guys, the three of you, take office in the future, whether it's you or whoever, you would have that opportunity. And the next election, you would have two people, and so you would have staggered terms, but they would run concurrent with the commissioner that appointed them.
That makes sense, but I don't know if statutorily, we can't correct that problem.
Right. The statute requires staggered terms, and it says how you will stagger them. And while we might be able to make some tweaks or adjustments, we're not going to be able to make it line up concurrently, because then you wouldn't have the staggering that the statute requires.
Of course not, because that makes too much sense.
Right. But for the other advisory boards, if you go that route, there may be an ability to do that. But TDC is special.
Yeah. Well, the other problem I have is that, you know, again, like Commissioner Pritchett said, your pool of volunteers is very small.
Not on this board. I mean, sorry to interrupt, but I have people begging me to be on this board.
Really?
Really.
I've had the same as well.
Interesting.
I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt. I tried to wait to the end of the talk.
No, that's good.
I mean, I'm just telling you, at least from my perspect, I could probably send a few your way if you get stuck.
And if she runs out, I can send them.
And perhaps it's because there's a tax dollar attached to it, perhaps it's because it's a board that does something important? I'm not sure. But I know that people are definitely interested in that. It's like planning and zoning is another board that people ask me about, you know, do you have an opening there? And there's a couple boards, but I see, you know, your point on finding difficulty vacancy, filling vacancies on other boards, because I feel you. I mean, I have the same problem, but that probably are maybe our boards that we need, you know? Some of them. I think we have too many boards, but...
Well, Commissioner Loeb, explain to me, win me over here.
Sure.
Explain to me why this is important, and what are you trying to achieve?
Because we have more than one individual that's been on there for a prolonged period of time. I believe that we have one that was on roughly 16 years. I just think that the commission, obviously, the voters want us to have term limits, and if we're delegating to some degree what we would otherwise be doing to an advisory board, I think it's important that we have comparable term limits or even more stringent term limits, depending on the composition of the board and really the beliefs of the commission here. I agree that any time you have term limits, you may lose an individual that's qualified for a period of time. But with respect to Laura Lee Thompson, I would love for her to remain involved with that board, but she simply won't be involved in the capacity as someone that's got voting rights. It doesn't mean that she can't advise individuals, it doesn't mean she can't come to the meetings. She might even suggest someone who would take the spot. I can tell you, I received, and I got the impression, although I didn't push, so that I didn't run afoul of sunshine, I got a call from one of the members of the TDC who's been on seven years, who would be impacted by this in roughly a year's time in support of it. I didn't push whether he called the rest of you, but I got the impression that he did, and I'm seeing at least one nod.
Yeah.
So I can tell you, it's something I would like to see implemented on all the boards, but I think TDC is one board where it's sorely needed based on the composition.
I don't agree, but I'm not saying that I wouldn't agree in a week or a month or six months.
Sure.
But right now, I would have to think more about it, so I can't support it.
That's just legislative intent. I mean, but, and I totally agree with term limits, and I think it's sort of, you know, reestablishing the public trust, and whether or not our TDC has done anything remotely questionable, or whether or not, you know, you love everything they do or dislike some of what they, I think this helps reestablish that public trust as well. And I think, the only thing that I think is a bit extreme, and only because I'm trying to be fair, is because, you know, like Commissioner Pritchett brought it up, and it made me think of that point that I was going to bring up, is I think forcing someone to stay off two entire terms, given that the terms are four years.
Well, let me make it easier for you, if I may. If it makes you happier and feel better about it, I'm happy to...
I don't know about happier, but I think four years is...
If you're more comfortable with that, I have no opposition to moving to have it approved, substituting four years for the directors. Are you amenable to leaving six for the executive director?
Well, I mean, I don't know how you have a commissioner that you can leave this board and in two years come and lobby it, and now we're going to have a director that can't sit on a board? I'm trying to just be consistent.
That makes sense.
And I'm not biased in any way as far as, he's not my best friend, you know, but I'm trying to be fair and equitable.
Okay, so how about, instead of two terms, we'll just say one term for the time they have to remain off?
That's fine.
And instead of remaining off for six years for an executive director, four years?
Yeah, for a term. Or if you want to make it equal to what a commissioner, because not that Barfield would ever become a consultant, poor Barfield is, Jim Barfield's been the topic of a lot of discussion today, but he could potentially come before this board, because according to our rules and regs, two years. And lobby us.
Yeah, I'm happy to be flexible. I prefer four if you're not going to support it but for two, I'll amend it to two.
Because, and he's one person, and that's how I look at it. Like, I had, you know, one or two people express concerns because of my appointment, and you would have thought the sky was falling. And that's how I know we probably need to make some changes on that board. Because, you know, the person I'm appointing, I might as well say, is Giles Malone. He's fantastic. He brings a lot to the board, he's got great ideas, and he's promised to fight for South County. The person he's replacing, I haven't heard from in two years, except when his appointment was up. And that's disturbing to me. I don't want that.[1789.26] And like you said, you're stuck with him for two years. I tried to work with him, but unfortunately, it just didn't work out. And I got to look out for everything south of 192.
Reach out to your state legislators and get them to change it.
Well, yeah, exactly. But I think this is a fair and equitable way. It's a good compromise. And I think, you know, and this is sort of an aside from what you're intending on doing right now. I think it's important because we do have those midnight appointments. I've seen it here as a, as a member of the board, and I understand, you got a little power before you leave and make a few appointments for the next year. I don't think that, I think we need to look at that policy, at changing that so people aren't appointing people on the way out the door.
Right.
And there was an issue with my appointment because my appointment wanted to start at the last meeting in December because they're doing a reorganization meeting before the next appointment come in. And I don't think that's proper. So maybe, I don't know if it's a management issue or if that's a, I don't think they need to have an organizational meeting before the new members come in. I think that's sort of, again, it's political. It's, you want to do things right. Right? So everybody's in a panic because my new member's going to come and have a vote. And I don't like that. That's the politics that doesn't need to be on these boards. We need to keep them straight. We need to instill confidence in what they're doing.
Maybe we should make our appointments in January. Or make them, when we make them, make them effective as of when they're...
But they shouldn't have organization meetings the day that the person's leaving. They're going to appoint a chair, a new chair of the, of the TDC, the last meeting of my appointment, of my existing appointment. To me, that seems like it's, it's planned. Maybe it's, maybe it's not, but I, I have a feeling. Because then there was like a lot of phone calls and a lot of... Yeah, so I don't want that either. I want, again, I, I think that we need to instill trust and transparency, and we want, we want to make sure we have good representation that rotates, so...
If I may?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so in that case, would I be moving to have approved? And I'm, I'm just going to read the portions that change. So as to the three bullet points that are on the face of this, any TDC director who has served two consecutive terms shall be ineligible to serve for a period of, and we're modifying this here, one term following the service triggering the application of the two-term limit. And then it goes on, a director must remain off the TDC Board of Directors for a minimum of one term prior to being eligible for reappointment to the TDC Board of Directors, whereupon he or she will once again be subject to a two-term limit. And then it goes on, additionally, a tourism office executive director and/or any individual holding a similar position shall be ineligible to serve on the TDC Board of Directors for a period of two years following the last date of employment.
That sounds fair.
And that's, that's what I'd so move.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lights are coming and it's late. Commissioner Pritchett?
I, I have a feeling this is going to go through with it, but I just want to state again, I have a lot of heartburn with it. If you would make it our district, decide under, because Laura Lee is the poster child for who you want on this board as far as a voting member. When I was running for office, I, I know this is something everybody wants on. I don't have them knocking down on my doors. Someone came to me and almost strong-armed me a bit with, with like some pressure, saying, you know, this is the board I want to be on. I said, well, good for you.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I, I get that, but I'm, I'm just really blessed to have somebody who's...
She's, she's amazing.
She's a businesswoman, and she just gives her time. So I just want you guys to know as you push this through that it's just, it's really breaking my heart with her.
If, if it makes you feel any better, I'll continue to go to Dixie Crossroads.
Well, who wouldn't?
And luckily for her, she's involved in so much.
She's just, she's just so wonderful.
Yeah.
Hopefully have a second?
I think somebody did. I can pass the cable.
I'll amend his, I mean, I'll second his amended motion. There we go.
Any more comments? All right, motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-2. All right, J-7. Is someone going to talk about it, J-7?
Maybe the best bet is to have public comment, and then we can discuss it.
Okay.
If that's okay?
Is this your item?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought this was staff's item, I'm sorry.
No.
You should have just said it's his.
Well, it looks like it's written by a lawyer.
It does, well, there you go. I apologize.
No, no, don't worry.
So you want to talk about it first?
No, my, my thought is if, unless someone wants me to address it in the interest of time, why don't we just skip toward commentary from the audience? And then I'm happy to pick up at that point.
Okay. Jack Raderman, and then Charles Carter. Thanks for sticking it out, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I appreciate y'all being here to hear our concerns for North Merritt Island. My name's Jack Raderman. I live at 568 East Hall Road. And I'm here tonight representing the North Merritt Island HOA. And we represent all the homes from the Barge Canal to the NASA Gate. I'm the president, and I have had no positive phone calls about the O'Boy family ranch, petting zoo, wedding chapel, zipline, butt-dogging, alligator wrestling, and whatever else they have there. I would characterize them as being a bad neighbor. They had a rock concert on a Saturday afternoon, and as the crow flies, I estimate that I was about 1.8 miles away, and I could hear it. I called the sheriff. They came out and made a report, and they said that they had the right permits, and there was nothing that they could do about it. But, you know, I didn't move to North Merritt Island, and neither did the rest of us move to North Merritt Island to hear a rock concert that's behind a residential neighborhood. This, this business is behind this residential neighborhood. There's kids that don't go in the street anymore because all kind of two, 300 car, well, two to 250 cars go through there for these events. Property's been damaged. Mr. O'Boy has not been a good neighbor to the rest of us. And so I would greatly appreciate if you support Commissioner Loeb's resolution here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Phil Bernardo will be next.
Charles Carter. I live at 4068 Judith Avenue. You going to start the clock over or I just get a minute?
Oh.
You got newbies up here, I apologize.
Yeah, I am one of those rich retired guys that you don't like, so maybe I would...
Oh, stop it.
Charles Carter, 4068 Judith Avenue. I'm representing Heron Village, which is a land condo. We have 440 individual homes, and we own about 50 acres of land. That land is mostly dedicated to St. John's Water Management District, and we protect it. The only problem with it is it abuts O'Boyle's farm. We have had to spend thousands of dollars surveying our property, calling law enforcement because he has literally taken heavy equipment and demolished our property. Even, and he still does it today. He sells his organization as the ability to take you on swamp tours. So he has a big vehicle that he has managed to knock down trees, cover up ditches. What we did, we were fortunate, is our property touched Sanchez Brothers' properties because he had migrated two miles to the Barge Canal during this destruction. Now, if you don't know that part of the county, as you go down Courtney, and you look over to the Wetlands that we call Sykes Creek, that's all wooded and all environmentally protected. Heron Village is probably the ideal development not to disturb the Indian River Lagoon. Our land is set up to repurculate the soil. All the runoff goes into retention ponds, and we have special fertilizer rules and et cetera. And we have to deal with O'Boy, who will do anything he wants to. And then we have to call the sheriff, give him the warnings for trespassing, let him know that survey stakes are a felony to move, which he moves them. He takes our crew that has put in a barbed wire fence, tells them that is his property. So we have to call the sheriff. The sheriff comes out and explains to him that that has been surveyed and fenced. And if he wants to dispute the land, he's going to have to do the same. The guy violates every single, I don't know, just every single, every single thing you could do in this county. And it appears to us in the neighborhood that the county really doesn't care what he does because nobody is able to enforce the laws that he is violating. And if you look at the liens, and I'll close out because I'm out of time. There's hardly anything he hasn't violated. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil? And after Phil, it'll be John Sidell? Sidell, Sidell?
Okay, so my name is Phil Bernardo. I live at 4440 North Tropical Trail, Merritt Island. So I'm a resident of North Merritt Island. I'm also a board member of the North Merritt Island Homeowners Association. I'll keep my comments pretty brief. I recommend that the county, I recommend the requested action be accepted. In other words, I recommend the county attorney's office be authorized to file the foreclosure action. I base my recommendation on, and I'm not going to repeat, but the first two speakers, I agree with everything they said. In addition to that, I understand the O'Boy property is zoned agricultural. And as mentioned, it's being used as a business. It's a bar. It's a, it's a concert venue. It borders a residential neighborhood, and I believe it's injurious to the surrounding property owners. It has the potential to negatively affect their property values. And my home is, it's on Tropical Trail, and it's between one and one and a half miles away from the O'Boy property. I went to Google Maps, and it shows a mile and a half, but it's not a straight line. But it's at least a mile away. And I can hear noise at times from that property. And as an example, they had a country music concert September 16. My wife is like, is somebody maybe having a wedding in their backyard or something? And we go on the porch, we can hear the music. And then when the band takes a break, and I, it's not an announcer, I think it's the band maker, or the band, you know, someone in the band, he goes, "So here we are in effing Florida." You know, I'm not going to say the word. But, I mean, we could clearly hear that, and we're pretty far away. So I'm not going to go on and on. I do agree with what the other speaker said. Just once again, the requested action, I recommend that it be approved.
Thank you. After Mr. Sidell, it'll be Betsy Sidell?
Yeah. I'm John Sidell. I live at 3991 Dundee Drive. I reiterate what everybody said ahead of me, and I'm in favor of imposing the, the, enforcing the liens. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy? You agree? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Any minute and a half?
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll put you at the bottom. There's a few. Go ahead, take a break. I'll, I'll move your card if you want. Take a minute to catch your breath. There's other cards I can take before you if you want.
Listen back to you.
You can't imagine this hell. I'm sorry.
Oh, don't apologize.
And I'm tired, sorry.
Sorry. Carol Stevens? And Patty Lasel? Leslie?
My name's Carol Stevens. I live at 3998 Dundee Drive. My house, if you go out to the street this way, go to the next building, is where Mr. O'Boy's property is. The noise is horrible. He had this concert, and Brian said that I could play this.
Just hold it up to the microphone if you don't mind.
I will. Let me take it off mute. Okay, let me make sure. This was the day of the concert. I went out my front door. Just a second.
Technical difficulties?
I got it. Okay, this is still Sunday, the 16th. This is at 5:53 PM. Now, this is my front door. My windows are rattling in my house. Now, yes, we have rockets going off, but that's five minutes. This is from 2:00 in the afternoon till 8:00 at night. We can't even go out and enjoy our own yard. And he's having an event every Saturday now with bands, with food and alcohol. And we are residential. I just moved there in 2014. I would not have moved there had I known this could come into our neighborhood. I got a video if you don't, you know, you want to see it.
You may be running out of time.
Yeah.
Just, if I may, you may want to use the remaining time to let the commission know where your residence is in relation to the property.
I am on the west side of Dundee Drive. There is a lot between Patty's house and another house. And then there's a water pond, and then there's sanded trees. Then he built the entertainment barn on the other side of that, and it all abuts up to our properties. And we hear this constantly. In May of this year, I have taken two years off. May, my son was home with me. He had to move in. We just got done with chemo. He was on the couch. Eric was having some kind of graduation party. And my son, 38 years old, just finished chemo that day, could sing to the music that they were playing that night. That's how loud this is. Now, I, that, we had a boat at one time in our driveway. We got rid of it because we were getting people knocking on our doors when he was Adventures of Paradise, because they thought we were the Swim with the Dolphin Tours at our house. So we had people knocking on our doors all the time.
Wow.
And this is, we've been putting up with this since 2015. You guys are new. If you can help us, please do.
Thank you.
Patty? Name and address?
My name is Patty Leslie. I live at 3999 Dundee Drive. I also own the empty lot at 3997 Dundee Drive. I live on the east side of the road. My property butts his property dead on. I want to address the off-site impact of his ranch on our neighborhood. The area is most affected by that property, our Gator and Dundee Drive. Apparently, the only thing our neighborhood can object to is the off-site impact and the quiet enjoyment of our homes. I'm sorry, I thought I had five minutes, so I'm going to talk fast.
Oh, that's okay.
Our objectives. One, impact on services such as roads. All roads leading to the O'Bloy Ranch are residential. Besides the petting zoo and the various other amusement activities advertised for that property, the O'Bloy's have also constructed a 3,000-square-foot wedding barn and wine bar. Their advertising indicates this wedding barn has a 200-person capacity. Mr. O'Bloy has also previously claimed that his daily visitor numbers are 1 to 200 as well. There are semi-tractor trailer trucks on a regular basis making deliveries to his property. There are flatbed tractor trailers making hay deliveries on a regular basis, who for some reason, even though the O'Bloy's have 25 acres of property, offload their delivery for the O'Bloy's on our street, frequently riding on neighbors' lawn and blocking traffic. Septic pumping trucks also make regular appearances. Flatbed trailers carrying heavy equipment also traverse our streets on a regular basis. The amount of commercial or industrial delivery vehicles needed to provide goods and services to his property is most assuredly detrimental to our streets. These are residential streets and constructed as such. They were not roads designed for the cumulative impact of sustained commercial or heavy traffic. Compatibility with surrounding land use. Three of the four boundaries of the O'Bloy property are residential. The majority of the O'Bloy's activities conducted on their property have no compatibility with residential properties. Specifically, their ability to serve sell alcohol from their 200-person-capacity wedding barn. The potential is high that on a continual basis, 200 cars could be entering our residential street and exiting sometime later. Only now exiting guests have potentially consumed alcohol. This is definitely not compatible to a residential neighborhood, nor for that matter are the visitors on Saturday, who for four hours plus come for the live music, barbecue, and alcohol. Consistency with the character of the area. There are two issues concerning this character. Issue number one, there continues to be an illegal sign on the portion of the O'Bloy property that is classified residential. As advertising of that nature and size is not permitted on residential property, why is that sign still there? Issue number two, while there are times in the course of neighborhood living that we celebrate along with our neighbors some milestone family event with a lively party and music, it's an occasional thing. In our neighborhood, it's a weekly thing. Every Saturday for four-plus hours, we hear live loud music and crowds. Going outside to sit and relax and enjoy your property is a memory now for most of us. And if there's a wedding or music festival scheduled, forget about going outside at all.
Ms. Leslie? I'm sorry, I just, I'm trying to be-
Come on, five, look, I'm a little annoyed, five hours. I have two paragraphs-
I appreciate that, but if I, if I offer you that privilege, then I have to offer it to everybody in order to be fair.
Thank you.
Keith Braun?
Hello, my name is Keith Braun. I live at 4,002 Dundee Drive. Approximately 18 years ago, I purchased a residential lot in this neighborhood. Every lot of frontage on this road is residential. I had no intent to have a tourist venue in my neighborhood. I have a nine-year-old daughter that cannot ride her bike in the street. I can't put her to sleep because of her ADD meds, and there's music till 10-plus PM many evenings. I mean, it's just, it's been an impact on our lifestyle for now, like they said, three years. I think they've covered the rest of it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Betsy, are you able to talk over? You got this, Betsy. I think we know how you feel, so just take a deep breath, and you're doing great.
I'm good once I start reading. Just don't start the clock yet.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll let you introduce yourself first.
My name is Betsy Sidell, and I'm not crying about that. My address is 3991 Dundee Drive, Merritt Island. Since their arrival in our neighborhood, just stop that clock for one second. Okay.
She can stand up there with her.
If you wrote it down, do you want, do you want her to read it for you?
Oh, I need to say this.
I know you do. So I'm going to stand here and support her if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
It's okay, Betsy.
All right. Since their arrival in our neighborhood in April 2015, the O'Bloy's have inflicted themselves upon us in a myriad of ways. Our property has been damaged by an invitee of the O'Bloy's who is checking in for the eco tour. There is excessive traffic and excessive noise. They are open for business six days a week, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. On any given day, we may be subject to the sound of a car horn blasting repeatedly as they drive their tractor-drawn train around the property, or the unmuffled deuce-and-a-half truck used for their swamp buggy amusement ride. They have live music every Saturday afternoon from noon till 4:00. The amps are turned up, and they are approximately 300 feet from our home. One of their newest ventures is the O'Bloy Saloon, which they advertise on their website as a full beer and wine bar. So we now essentially have a bar in our backyard and potentially drivers under the influence driving through our residential neighborhood where small children play. Semi-trucks park in the street while they offload merchandise onto a pickup that takes it back to the O'Bloy's property, blocking half the road. Unsightly, unpermitted signs in violation of county code blight our community. The O'Bloy's have numerous revard county codes resulting in fines, which, to the best of my knowledge, have not been paid. The Florida Department of Health issued the O'Bloy's a notice of noncompliance which lists seven violations. These, to the best of my knowledge, have, they have taken no action to come into compliance with. Two businesses have filed a lawsuit against the O'Bloy's alleging nonpayment for services or products. Eric O'Bloy is currently on felony probation for numerous FWC violations, violations which, to the best of my knowledge, have resulted in the revocation of his alligator farming license. Eric O'Bloy also has new charges pending from FWC and is alleged to have violated his probation. Last but not least, Eric O'Bloy has filed a lawsuit against me personally, the complaint stating in part that I have made dozens of complaints to law enforcement, code enforcement, and county officials regarding Mr. O'Bloy, and asserting that those complaints are wholly baseless and defamatory, this despite public record to the contrary. This list is not an attempt at a character assassination, but rather to speak to a pattern of behavior, a pattern of disregard for laws, rules, and regulations regardless of the agency, as well as a complete disregard for their neighbors. Past behavior being predictive of future behavior, it is a pattern which the O'Bloy's will likely continue unless they are given sufficient consequences. To that end, I respectfully ask that you support Commissioner Lober's proposed motion to foreclose on the O'Bloy's code enforcement liens.
Thank you. That was very brave. Did great.
And the other thing is, we know that you've got a file somewhere with everything we've come to you for, and some of you don't know what we're talking about, but if you would take the time and go through it, maybe help us think of something?
I think four of us know what you're talking about, and now Mr. Lober, I think we all know what you're talking about.
Brian is very well-versed. He's been kind enough to-
She's earned it, believe me.
But we're all aware of it.
Yeah.
We just desperately need relief. We need help.
We understand. Thank you so much. Mr. Lober?
Okay, so I can certainly say from my own experience, having gone up there on more than one occasion, everything I've seen meshes with what we've heard from the folks that have been kind enough to stay here five hours to present to the commission. I've spoken with the county attorney regarding our options. This appears to be the best option to at least hopefully get some resolution or some potential of resolution for these folks. I think they've put up with a lot more than a lot of other individuals would have any inclination to put up with, and they've exhausted all of the avenues that have been made available to them. And this is something that I see is really one of the few options that we have as a commission to help out a good number of our constituents. So I would urge my colleagues up here on the commission to join me in supporting this, and as such, I would move to approve it as written.
Commissioner Smith? I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, a second by Commissioner Pritchett.
I just want to say, thank you. I'm new at this. I just want to say that I really feel for you folks. You came before us. I'm the only commissioner up here that was here back in 15 and 16. And I just want you folks to know, this Mr. O'Bloy that they're talking about, the guy is utterly belligerent. He's, I feel for you. I really do. He stood at this podium, first Robin Fisher was the chairman at that time, and then Barfield, Jim Barfield, was the commissioner in the second year. Countless times, this guy stood there, and he was beyond rude to both of them. Belligerent is a better word. And so whatever you can do to slow this guy down, stop him, whatever, and give these people some relief, I'm in total agreement with.
Thank you.
And I applaud you for doing this, because this has gone on for way too long.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion. If there's no more discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. It was worth the wait. Thank you for your patience. I understand this is an unusually heavy agenda, and you've been, several of you have been to meetings before, so we apologize.
And he's so, and he's so brave. Didn't he show up?
That's okay.
Ms. LaSalle?
I just opened up their saloon webpage.
Hi, Pam LaSalle-Viera. I, a lot of people don't even know about the citizen advisory boards. I talked with someone today who is fairly involved in government, and she looked to see about a position, and she said, oh, well, their appointment ends. And I explained to her, no, they're probably going to be reappointed. And I, I think the term is polarization. When you have a long-term board where they're all knowing each other, and the Eels is the classic example, and that's probably what spurred me here. We were in an Eels meeting a few weeks, well, maybe a couple of months ago, and they, some of those people have been on there since it began. Some of those people have been on there 25 years. Ms. Thompson is on that Eels board, has been on it a very long time, and I believe she said that, at that meeting, that she had been on the TDC for 15 years. I, I've looked into this. This is not an uncommon problem for communities to have this entrenchment. And one of the problems, and I got sidetracked, the polarization, what that can do is it turns into a group think to where they really don't even have to discuss issues, and sometimes they can rush things through without carefully vetting them because they have become so familiar with one another. I, I hear you, Commissioner Pritchett, about the 1%. I'm in a lot of volunteer organizations that is constantly struggling to get people involved. But in all honesty, if you can't get people to be on a board, why do we have the board? I think there's influence in boards, the boards that y'all have people clamoring for. I didn't even know about how to get on a board. I think there needs to be something more transparent. I want the community involved. I don't want just the same select group of people. We have over, I think, 54 boards in this county, and so if you round it out, so say that's 400 people. Tonight, we have 90 positions for reappointment or appointment. Of those 90, only seven are new appointments. I, I would, I didn't really expect the board to make a decision and get something done because I like to do everything in the sunshine. I don't go around to each of y'all individually soliciting and lobbying because I like everything to be done where everyone can see it happening. But I, I think that y'all could work on how to work through the county manager to get some kind of criteria set up, some kind of organization to make the whole, Commissioner Snartie, you're the only one I've seen post to try to get people to come to a board that you had an opening on. Anyway, I think there needs to be something that is more conducive to, because the whole point of these citizen committees is to get citizens involved. It's not just for your benefit, it's to have a relationship with the community. What good is it if it's the same 400 people year in and year out with only marginal change? And, but the boards that you're clamoring for, because we do not have independent oversight in this county, we can't know what kind of influence. The chairman of the planning and zoning does a superior job, but he's been there a very long time, I think. And if you pull up from past agenda, consent agendas, and you see, I was shocked at the same names year after year. And I just don't think it's good for our community to have the same handful of people and not try to embrace and get something wider. I'm sure I've left something out, but, you know, I, I was shocked when I went to that Eels meeting, and they sat there amused that they've been on it so long, and I, I just don't think, I live in a retiree community, and we have a huge resource of professionals, and I don't think they know that they could come work in their community. Any questions?
Unless you guys have questions for, no.
May I briefly?
Okay, go ahead.
Very, very briefly. First off, thank you for coming up, Ms. LaSalle. I, I think this is an excellent idea. My only concern, and maybe it's a question best directed to the county attorney, is what impact this would have with respect to ordinances? Because I see that in the summary explanation and background, it talks about three-year term limits with no more than two terms.
Well, I just, I did some research, and that's what another community had done. So I just randomly selected that since they had done that, and they had limited it to two terms. I fully expected y'all to have a discussion. But one thing I want to point out that I didn't, we have to, the county has to pay for every one of these meetings to have a staff there to support. And so, you know, it's not that it's inconsequential when you add the 54 together and then you do all the staff for all the different meetings throughout the year. So I think there is a fiscal impact to it, but I don't know about, but I just randomly picked that from another community.
I, I mean, I'll just say with, with respect to following that up, I absolutely support the idea of term limits on all of the advisory boards, but I think it may be something that we need to hammer out a little more thoroughly in terms of making sure that whatever we propose complies with statute and doesn't have any legal flaws, because this just seems to be potentially problematic the way it's written. And if, if you're willing, I'm happy to sit down with you and with the county attorney at some point over the next several weeks to maybe figure out some options.
I'm not a lobbyist with a staff, so, and the county attorney works for you, so I would have never approached her.
I understand, but I'm making the offer to you, and had you been a lobbyist, I don't know that I would have been as nice to you as I am being now. That said, I'm happy to, and I know that the county attorney's probably grimacing, saying he's making more work for me, but I trust her so much, I definitely want to keep her involved in the process. If you're amenable to it, I'm happy to sit down with, with you and she at some point over the next several weeks.
Sure. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Ms. LaSalle.
Oh, you're finished?
Yeah. No question. No, no, I need you for a minute, if you wouldn't mind. I appreciate that you get your involvement in government. You're proof that you don't need to be on a board to have a great impact on, on, on what we do. As you're well aware, I brought term limits on an innocuous board, and it failed two to three. However, I think you've seen that the board changed, and the new commissioner decided to go after one of the marquee boards and was successful in that three to two. You've made a very important first step. Unfortunately, with all these boards, some are created by this board willy-nilly.
Right.
Some are, like the TDC, are created in statute. I mean, I'm looking some of these up because I, you know, the Transportation Planning Organization Governing Board has a four-year term, is designated by Florida Statute 339.175. East Coast Regional Planning Council has a one-year term. That's Statute 186.504. We can't do anything if it, if it's in statute. But we are extremely, extremely, extremely fortunate to have a very diligent county manager. And I went to our county manager a couple of months ago and said, how many boards do we have? Do we have the ability to sunset? How long are they, have they been in existence? What, what, what requirements do they meet? Was it a creation of ordinance or? So this is a living, breathing document. They have spent countless hours on it, and I believe, I called Mr. Abate today, I think he committed to March. Is that, is that correct, Madam Chair?
Actually, yeah, rule accept March. That's good.
Okay.
Can give us until March.
I, I've seen the work product, and let me tell you right now, they are well, well, well into it. So, and taking into account all the things that I just mentioned, because I think, from what Commissioner Lober just said, and I'm squarely, as proven by my track record, on board to do this, but we're going to have to tackle these individually.
Yeah.
And we can't tackle them unless we all have that unified document that says, yes, three years is great, let's term limit three years for these eight boards. But these six boards, statutory minimum is four years, so they have to make them four years.
Right.
So we can't tackle them individually, but we have that. And let me tell you, I've seen the work product. It's a spreadsheet.
Beautiful.
It's pages and pages and pages.
It is. It's amazing.
But to go over each and every statute takes a little bit of to, takes a little bit of time, but I'm telling you, the, the county manager has made the commitment by March 2019, and if it's any sooner, you know, you're more than welcome. I, I want to have that, I want to have this discussion, and it may need, it may need a workshop.
That's, that was what I anticipated.
It may need-
That I was going to hear, because then, once the boards all hear about it, that, you know, they may want to participate more thoroughly.
But I don't want to, I don't want to punt and say, we'll handle this in the future. You've got a date, March 2019, and when you see the document, you will, you will be very happy that- happy that they got it turned around in that short of a time, because it is an immense amount of work that the county manager has done on this. And we know that it will comply with the statutory requirements.
Good.
And this may require six or seven ordinances, but I think we, if we sat down and we had a term limit board, and some, I don't even think we need term limits. I think some we can potentially sunset, you know, take care of them that way. But that, that, that will be in that document that we all can look at, and whether we disagree or agree, but we'll all be looking at what is allowed.
Good.
And I think that is the first and foremost step, that we all have all of the options laid out. So, March 2019, I know that, I hope we can have a workshop very soon after, and I would like to make a motion to direct the county manager office to include in their review advisory boards the basis for terms and whether term limits can be opposed to completed, to be completed before or on March of 2019.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, a second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Just discussion first.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm just asking.
These were, okay, I thought these were from earlier. Yes, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah.
Here, again.
You're finished with me, right?
Yes, ma'am.
For discussion.
Yeah, here's my concern again, guys. I don't have people knocking down my doors to serve boards. So if we do that, we're going to have a lot of boards no longer with people on it, which is fine, but some of them are kind of important boards that have highly educated people serving on them. And here's the thing, if we want to go ahead and make it so coincides with our elections, I'm totally on board, or make it so that we can remove them if they're not serving. But I advertise all the time, every time I have someone come in my office for an appointment, I try to talk them into taking an application to serve on a board, because I'm trying to get other people involved, and I'm already throwing out, I actually make cold calls to people every once in a while and say, you interested in serving on boards? I can't get anybody to do it, and the few that I've got to no longer talk to me. So, I mean, this isn't a knock-your-door-down thing, and it's in a board that just gives us, you know, their opinion, and we don't always even go with it anyway. So it's not easy serving on these boards, and Lord knows, I'm not sure I would do half of them, that people sit on them and give us input and information. I usually read their minutes to try to, because they kind of do a little bit of the weeding for us before we get it at this level. So I think we almost kind of have term limits because we can remove them or add them and on, and I'm not slow to do that. If they're not showing up or serving, or I've got other people interested, I'm very comfortable with exchanging those out. So I don't mind the conversation, but just to impose them on all these boards across the board, guys, I think we're really going to be hurting citizen input because we won't have it anymore, and it's just us getting the information and making up our minds without people getting a chance to have input, because I think a lot of these boards will just go away then, which might not be bad for some of them. I mean, some of them, I don't even know why they are boards, but some of these boards are kind of important with the service they do to the community.
Right. Commissioner Smith?
I agree with all of you. So that's that for straddling the fence.
It's pretty open.
Yeah, but I do. First of all, I think that there's a lot of boards that can just go bye-bye, because either they don't meet, or they don't meet very often. They don't do anything. They don't substantiate, substantive, whatever that word is, substantive, yeah.
Substantively?
Yeah, that's the word. They don't really benefit us that much. Term limits, I don't know. I flip a coin, I don't really care about it. I don't, I don't, I don't think it really makes a difference. I said it the first time Commissioner Tobias brought it up. If I appoint you, I can dismiss you. So that's your term limit. That's your commissioner's authority. So I don't know that you have to rely on a piece of paper to say this guy or girl can only serve this long. But I think the big, the big thing is limit the amount of boards. I don't think you need that many. And then the other thing I want to point out, you're right, you live in a community where there's an awful lot of professional people. How do we reach out to them? I mean, and you're not the only community. There's communities all over this county. How do we reach out to them? How do we let them know that we have positions that we need their help?
To make the record, because I know of Mike. I would work with the county manager and Mr. Walker and the communications department and see what you can do, because people don't, honestly, I started coming here to go to these meetings, and I still didn't get what was going on about the boards for, you know, one to two years. And then I saw how the game works, and people just don't know. And that's where I would start, and, because you have more resources than I do, but I know, Commissioner Sinardi, I've seen on Facebook when there was an opening in your, one of your committees, I don't remember which one it was, but, but there's also not much information about what the committees do. People don't understand what the position's about.
We just got, that's that spreadsheet, it's Kathy Wall that worked on that, and that talks about how often they meet, what they do, like how many members. I mean, that's sort of that work product that...
Here's the compromise I would throw out. If y'all don't eliminate a board, and you're not going to term limit, at least put how many years they've been on the board by their name. So the public that looks it up will be able to see, oh, they've been on it for two decades, you know, and then they can see the whole board, if the whole board has been on it for two decades. And then they wonder why nothing changes, you see? But anyway, that's, but that's what I would do. I'd reach out to...
Another good point, I, when I, I don't really pay that much attention to the boards. My aide does that, and she tells me that there's an opening, and I go out and try and find somebody to fill it. But if I knew that somebody was on my board for 10 years, I would just remove them, because I agree with you.
Well...
You know, and there are some very, very good people that have been there for a long time, and they're very, very dedicated, but at the same time, I believe in term limits too, because, you know, to paraphrase Benjamin Franklin, guests and fish all start to smell after about three days. Well, you could say the same thing about people that are on boards too long.
I think so. I think so. And I, the other point that I feel to make, surprisingly, a few people are on many boards. I remember a couple of years ago when we had the CRC, one person that was on the CRC was on five other boards. And, you know, you have to wonder, you know, and as I said, we don't have independent oversight, so that kind of plays into my concerns too.
Well, it's nice that we have people that are that civic-minded, that they want to serve on five boards, but again, it's something that we need to address.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And I think, I think the idea of that workshop, I mean, as much as I don't want to add extra meetings to all of our busy schedules, I think the workshop is where we can look at these boards individually, again, with that document, to say, okay, these ones are statutorily required to have this and have this many members or this type of member, and eliminate the ones we don't use. I have a binder this thick in my office, and it's the weird boards that no one wants to be on. It's not the cool ones, it's not the fun ones, or the ones that, where they're managing tax dollars, or where they're making important decisions. It's the ones that don't really do a lot, or they have a hard time getting a quorum, you know, which, you know, hopefully through this process, we'll eliminate them, but...
And we have to provide staff for those, too.
Right. Oh, exactly. I'm all for getting rid of them. It's sort of like a roll of the eyes, because sometimes you're, like, what is this board even doing? I'm asking that question, and I'm calling the member going, how do I offer somebody to go on this board when they haven't done anything in six months or a year? But the board's in place, and I got to keep them on there, so...
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Come back up on the next item.
Thank you, Pam.
Don't go too far.
Stay up there. Are we done with that one?
Matt, we, there's a motion in a second. I don't think we've taken a vote. Can, I'd like to amend my motion based...
Of course you would.
I'd like to add a column. You mentioned that there's a staff member there. I think an interesting column would be cost, to find out the staff time that goes into each one of, that goes into each one of...
Just a little item.
Sorry. Sorry. But I'd rather have as much information, information as possible.
Good thinking.
I don't know if that...
Can you repeat your motion for Ms. Pritchett?
It just would like to add another column of cost.
The whole thing? She said she'd like the whole thing.
Okay. Give me a minute here.
I'm so sorry.
Direct, thank you. Direct county manager to include the review advisory boards' basis for terms and whether term limits can be imposed, sunset, as well as the cost to each board to be completed before March of 2019.
The end of March or the beginning?
The last day, I don't think they're going to, you know, drag it out, but sometime in March.
Okay. Second still stands?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, a second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Hey, Ms. LaSalle?
Hi.
Hello again.
Yes, thank you.
It's been a long time.
Yes.
J-9, item J-9.
Pamela Salviera. This is to request that the lobbying lobbyist regulation that we have in place be expanded. This was under discussion from Commissioner Tobias quite a bit a year ago, and it's basically all we have now is just a registry. We don't have much ability to track where lobbyists go, who they see, what they're talking about, and that sort of arrangement. And what spurred me to push for this to come back along with the change in the board, recently, y'all decided to take contracts from, and not give local privilege points or however you grade the contracts, and give, make local people not have a competitive edge. And I have no problem with that. I'm just saying, we may be having more lobbyists come in, and we can't see who they're visiting with or what they're talking about. The list that we have, it lists, we've got 15 lobbyists registered, about a third of them looks like waste management is influential as far as issues here are concerned, but we, we don't know when, where, what, and why behind it. We just know who are lobbyists. And so I think the only way people could track this is maybe to request your calendars and see if any of you are meeting with them, but it still doesn't tell us, you know, what you're talking about. And other counties have done it to where they have it, where you can just key in and see, you know, who's doing what, and it just gives you a little bit more transparency. The other item that spurred me to do this is the lagoon funding. There's a lot of money behind that. And while we have a citizen oversight committee, they really don't have any authority to override you. They are just another committee. They don't have any independent ability to enforce anything. Y'all could spend all that money and ignore everything they said. But, so the state is talking about bringing in even more money. I was just at a meeting, and they're proposing trying to get another $50 million for the IRL, for all the counties, not just Brevard. So there's two things spurred me to do this. We're expanding the, who we're offering contracts to, basically, and there's a lot of money, and we can't follow it. And I think Commissioner Tobias had excellent, excellent ideas two years ago, well, it ended a year ago, but we started talking about it early after you came into office. And I would just encourage you to consider, and that's unfortunately probably another workshop, but anyway, I appreciate it, considering it. Thank you.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. I like how you put it. I had a good idea two years ago, and it's gone downhill ever since, but, you know, we took, we took, we took a first step. And that first step was, if you're going to lobby in Brevard County, we want to know who you are and what the principles, who you're lobbying for. But you're right, it doesn't tell how often they're meeting or anything of that nature. And if I remember correctly, it was, again, Assistant County Manager Frank Abate that found out a platform that another city had already done the diligence on. It was a cool app in which the onus is placed on the lobbyist. So if the lobbyist meets with me, he or she is already registered, they go into their phone, they, you know, met with Tobias in person, or whether it's on the phone on, you know, December 4th, to about, all aboard Florida, about Virgin, or Virgin Rail, or whatever the heck it's called. And no one met with me today, I'm just making that completely, totally up. And that way, if the person's entering it on their phone, it goes on to a county website, so you would get immediate feedback of whenever a lobbyist met with any of us, in what form they met with us, and what it was concerning. So here's the issue, is, well, I mean, you may be one of the more, one of the two or three more fiscally conservative people in all of Brevard County. Here's my, here's my question to you. Fort Lauderdale was willing to sell that to us last time when we looked into it for about $10,000. So the question to you is, do you think it's, I know that's ultimately a policy decision, but you're the one that's bringing this forward.
Right.
Do you think that this is worthy of $10,000 in order for this level of transparency? Or, and here's the suggestion that I made previously, that we charge a fee for the lobbying Brevard County, whatever it may be, 50 or $100, or I guess if there's 15 and it was $100 a year, that's, you know, it takes seven or eight years to recoup that.
I think you mentioned 250. You mentioned 250 last time, I think.
You know, I, at this point, I don't remember what I had for lunch, but, but, you know, that would be a new fee.
Yes.
You know, that would be an absolute new fee. And again, I should never shirk my responsibility, but you're the one that brought this forward.
Yes.
So as a new fee, do you think that would be fair?
Yes, because it's their cost of business.
Okay.
And it is their business. They are earning a livelihood at the taxpayers' pockets.
Okay.
But what, if you take the $10,000 and divide it by 15 or 20, you know, that's really not, 250 doesn't cover it.
And to be clear, this is only for paid lobbyists.
Yes.
So, you know, when concerned citizens come in, they would not even have to, as long as they're not being paid, they would not have to disclose. Of course, it would be public record, you could get that from my office or anything like that, but this would be only paid lobbyists. You mentioned, you mentioned, I haven't spoken with any of these folks up here, obviously, and times have changed. I don't think we need a workshop on this one. I will, my office will be more than willing to reach out to Fort Lauderdale again to see if they are more than willing to, you know, share that, or at least give us that opportunity. And I'm more than willing, you know, either next meeting, or most likely the first meeting in January, because it may take us a little time, to bring that up in the same form that it was previously, and we can discuss it in front of, in front of the board. Is, you know, is that, you know, you're the one that brought, you're the one that's brought this up, so I'm going to, you know, respect your opinion on this. Is that, is that something that would meet your needs if I committed by the, probably the first meeting in January to have that, you know?
Certainly. Yes, it would. I appreciate it.
Well, I thank you. This, I was going to deal with this, but I was going to deal with this months down the road, so I'm very happy to have you lead the charge on that, and you have my commitment to, I'll work with you so we can bring that together in January.
Well, I liked what you did a year ago and earlier, and so I'm sure you won't have any difficulty in picking up where it was let down, but I think it's very important. I don't think the public realizes, you know, transparency is everything. I always say this, citizen participation and transparency are the two things that'll fix government, or problems in government. So anyway, I really appreciate it. Thank you for postponing the vote on the consent agenda item. I just didn't want to cause something that discussion later could have changed, but I really appreciate all the consideration. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Just a note on that before we get going on it, Commissioner Tobias, we had them register, not all the ones that registered. I've met with them zero times since we've done it. So before we do that, I would, I would be willing that we get the list, and if we meet with them, find a way to send in information, everybody gets it, or we announce it at a meeting.
Definitely be cheaper.
Because I think that would, I mean, because seriously, I would come with zero lobbyists over the last two years since we've done it. I just don't have them knocking down my door. I wish they did. Maybe since they found out they can't buy me gifts anymore.
But, but the reality, the reality of the situation with that is, you know, some of these lobbyists meet with us very, in very close proximity to the meeting, right? So if it was...
Right, but they're not going to get in time for that anyway, so we have to come and say, look, I met with them, it's like quasi judicial, maybe we can just do that and figure out how that goes and see if we have any that, if we start building them up, maybe we do need to spend the funds to do this, but maybe we can see how that runs. We can make a commitment like that up here and...
Yeah, so, so am I hearing...
Because if we still have zero, it's a lot of money to spend for zero for two more years, so...
Well, how many lobbyists do we have? Fifteen?
Yeah. We also have a $1.3 billion budget. So, you know, it's certainly not the level the state is dealing with, but...
And I don't have anything to hide. My, everything's available, public record.
I'd like to tell everybody right away.
I'll even let you request my calendar without a fee. But I think we just have to be careful. We're not spending more money and creating more bureaucracy in an effort to say we're being transparent, when we already are doing everything to be transparent. I'm all about transparency, believe me. I mean, I'm the first one to say, you know, you've heard it from me, from my mouth. But I want to make sure that we're not expending an exorbitant amount of resources, or time, or money, trying to nail down what. You know, if you're not disclosing the information, then shame on you for holding the seat. And if you're not putting it on your calendar, shame on you for holding that seat. I don't know how you fix that, because, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the right answer is. I don't, I want to make sure we're not targeting one or two people because someone's worried about their undue influence, if that makes any sense.
That's why, that's why I asked Ms. LaSalle, that there is, and listen, that was what it was two years ago. So the value of this app may, may have decreased, right?
Right.
But, but I know that...
As long as it's not a bureaucratic nightmare to manage.
I mean, it's an app it should manage, right?
Right.
It should manage itself. That's the beauty of an app.
Assuming that they're reporting in the app. I mean, I don't know how you have, where is that double check? You have a lobbyist meet with you, and he fails to report?
He or she, right? Well, they, you have the ability to, then, public record, request our calendar to verify, you know, and we even had penalties set up if there's a lack of, lack of reporting, you know, and they lose...
I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, Commissioner Tobias. I just want to make sure it's very clean, and very cheap, and very easy, if that makes any sense.
Why don't we make a commitment up here for now, that if we have any next period of time, we just come right and report, and see what we're kind of looking at? I would put the burden on us. I don't mind.
Well, I unfortunately just made a, I unfortunately just made a commitment to Ms. LaSalle. I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow through on that one. I'll do the due diligence. Heck, I know, Fort Lauderdale may be willing to give it to us for $1,000, for all I know. But at least I'm gonna provide that with an option. And if you guys have other options that we can nail down, I certainly would be open to that. But I appreciate the time that Ms. LaSalle has done to bring that up. And, and I think, let's get it hammered out and see which, you know, what's the best on that one.
Correct. I agree. We don't need any action on that, because we're already looking into it. Item J-10, Mr. Dennis. Thank you for being patient, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Reverend J.B. Dennis, 3710, Catalina Drive. I'm here tonight with a proposed resolution for a county homeless shelter. There are over 850 people homeless in Brevard County. Homelessness is a crisis in Brevard County, where there are a significant cost and strains on law enforcement, the courts, private businesses, and other places, and public resources. There are only a few organizations and volunteers with the capacity to provide services to the homeless. The large crisis is the lack of housing. This county government should pledge today to be committed to building a homeless shelter, so men, women, and children can have a safe place to sleep every night. Housing stability affords people a foundation for life improvements, and opportunity to address the issues that causes their homelessness. When basic needs are met, people can engage and program to improve their life. The National Action Network offered petition for a workshop to sit down to plan a solution to end homelessness in Brevard County. After reviewing all the homeless shelters in Brevard County, all of them, including the VA, have the same policy, hurry up the wait, which means it takes weeks to get into a shelter. The National Action Network is petitioning for a county emergency shelter that is open seven days a week, 24 hours a day, intake hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. This shelter will provide beds, meals, spiritual counseling, and showers. After a person is admitted, they have 180 days to transition into an ongoing shelter for drug treatment, meal health treatment, alcohol treatment, job counseling, permanent housing. Once you may, once you move out, you cannot return for 120 days to start over. This vision can end homeless counseling in 30 days, not to mention the homeless who sleep on people's private property. A workshop to plan funding and staffing should be set up immediately. My proposed site of 555 Range Road is 20 acres. Six acres we would set aside to build a shelter area on. 14 acres would be a 100-stall flea market, each stall rents for $200 per month, for a total of $20,000 per month, making the county homeless shelter self-supported.
Thank you.
And what have any questions, or...
You have any questions or comments?
I have one.
Commissioner Loeb?
With respect to this, do you have any idea what the overall cost would be? And do you have any, any existing financial commitments from any other group?
Well, as a minister of our church, we are in homeless camps every Thursday with lunches. The churches can only do so much. This is an issue that's bigger than any city. I don't know if you ever heard of Sizbok up in Jacksonville, but they have a homeless shelter that stays open seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and the Jaguars have funded. And also, if the county stepped up to do something in this county, because these cold night shelters, and the lists of pages y'all have, these are jokes. I called five of them. A month ago, have not even got a response back. So cold night shelters is just a bandage on a, on a crisis. And a cold night shelter only helps a homeless person from 10 to 15 days per year. We talking about something that helped people 24 hours a day, seven days a week, where you can be admitted, and get the help you need to put you back in society as a productive citizen, to become employed again, or whatever your case may be.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no public comment cards. So move on to board reports. Frank? Mr. Abate?
Madam Chair?
Oh, no, we need to vote on F, yes, yes, yes. And I wrote it down like seven times to vote on, on F-19.
I make a motion to approve F-19.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett. May I get a second?
It's our board appointments.
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. Now we're on to board reports.
Okay, very quickly, commissioners, from what I heard tonight, in addition to the two workshops that were scheduled in February and March for the budget workshops, in April, which the date is already set, we'll set up the lagoon workshop that the board has indicated. And then in May, we'll look at doing something on term limits from the report that you get in March. So if that's the direction that the board is interested, is asking us to follow, we'll bring a date back after we check with your calendars for, for a May workshop. And the last item that I have is, last Thursday, I had the privilege of joining members of Hands On Brevard, which is an employee community volunteer program that was started by our Executive Leadership Institute alumnis several years ago. And Hands On Brevard, most recent event was at the Children's Hunger Project in Cocoa last Thursday evening. And less than two hours, about 30 members of our group packed 1,000 lunches that will benefit Brevard Public School students, who will be provided backpacks filled with food items that will sustain them over a weekend. We had a very good turnout, and I really appreciate those who took part. It's an important community service. And in my eyes, what these employees did really exemplified the best of what our employees have to offer.
Thank you. County Attorney?
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Loeb?
I want to thank the staff for spending so much time with me over the past little while here to bring me up to speed, including Fred's here, I guess he is technically staff as well. He's been keeping me in line. And, you know, without you all, I certainly would have had a much harder adjustment getting up here. And I just want you all to know that I appreciate everything you've done.
That's very nice. They are pretty amazing, aren't they?
They are.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot has happened in the last couple of weeks in the municipal level. In the district in which I represent, both Melbourne and Palm Bay have decided to fire their city managers. And my guess is, that's just the tip of the iceberg within the changes of these organizations. I don't, having gone to both those meetings and have, have had the privilege of joining them on a few other occasions, I'm confident to say, our board is, in many cases, in many regards, more divided than theirs. However, 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 we have a unifying captain, if you will. And during this holiday season, it was terrible, you know, watching the tragedy that was going down, and saying, we have it so damn well here at the county. It just made me thankful, you know, for our leadership here. Mr. Abate, Mr. Denninghoff, Mr., we'll go nameless here, because he probably doesn't want to be mentioned, okay? I'm being nice. And, and Ian over here to my left. So, thank you, guys. We're extremely, extremely diverse. And apparently with Commissioner Loeb here, we're getting even more diverse. And the way that you mention, the way that you manage our ideologies, our personalities, is, is absolutely incredible, far more than, than, you know, than I ever could imagine. So, again, thank you so much during this holiday season, and every other time that we probably fail to mention that. What happened at those city levels, it's not my position to judge. However, what happens here is a shining beacon that those guys and ladies probably need to follow. And in all regards, board, we need to have a discussion. If Palm Bay or Melbourne were thinking rationally, my first phone call to them would be to Mr. Abate, saying, hey, we're willing to pay more, come on and, and work for either, you know, Palm Bay or Melbourne. And Mr. Abate, watch out, only one of them has FRS. So, again, thank you, you and your team for all you do. And I'm sorry we don't say enough.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to pass on condolences to the family and friends of Barbara Davis. She was a real patriot that served many years as the leader of the Brevard Republican Executive Committee. And she'll be greatly missed by the community. And I would like to officially welcome our newest commissioner, Brian Loeb.
Thank you, sir.
And enjoy your stay. It'll be an adventure.
I'm starting to see that already.
All right. And I'll just end with, I appreciate everybody's encouragement, patience. This is my very first meeting that I chaired for this length of time, other than sitting in for a mayor while I was a council member. So I appreciate your patience with me and your assistance. And I thank you. And I thank everybody who endured very, very long and arduous meetings. So with that, you sure can.
I just want to note that when I had the chair, it was never this long.
Well, I didn't put all this, I didn't put all this stuff on the agenda either. So is this guy, so...
Just saying, right?
Yeah. Well, it's right before 11:00, meeting adjourned. So funny.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.